Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing the employment history of particular persons, matters of health and safety, and to receive advice of council. May I have a motion to reconvene the public session?
I do, sir.
And I will second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let my calling the call. Okay, so I'd like to start my president's report by recognizing that this is Black History Month, and as a time to educate ourselves on the history of Black Americans and the entire African diaspora. It's been recognized as a time to focus on systemic racism and bias, and faced by laws of African descent, and to recommit to dismantling systems of oppression. And as importantly, it's been time to learn about the many achievements and successes of Black people in this country and internationally. We've been doing this work in our district, and I want to thank our staff and our faculty for the work. And I also want to thank the PTA for enriching all of these efforts with the multitude of programs they have sponsored in our schools. We've also recognized the importance of bringing this work in regards to the many cultures and ethnicities worldwide into our curriculum and learning throughout the year. And we can be proud to say that we've embarked upon redressing biases in education and recognizing the importance of that focus year-round, academically and in the mental and emotional well-being of our students, and by extension, the entire community. So I'd like to express our thanks and gratitude for the work of our administration and faculty in putting into place comprehensive structures in professional learning and in the curriculum to allow this to take place year-round. And I also again want to recognize the work of our PTA in bringing the multitude of programs at the school and district level and to partner with us in this work. We have many committees that have sprung up out of the reckoning of systemic racism brought on by the Black Lives Movement. And we have six school-level and a district-level PTA diversity committee. We have our Board of Education School District Committee on Anti-Racism, Equity, and Social Justice, which is the CARES Committee, which is comprised of community members, parents, faculty, students, administrators, and Board of Ed members who are engaged in this work. I also want to recognize the work of the Towns Council on Race and Equity, who have done extensive research-based work with valuable recommendations for the town and schools. I'm very proud that we're a community committed to the work of equity, diversity, and inclusion, and that we strive to elevate these values every day. So at this point, I'd like to turn to Superintendent Foreman for her report.
Thank you, Vicki. I appreciate our elementary principals tonight who are with us. They are going to, we're going to begin by having a presentation on the elementary program. So if you guys could come up, I think that we're going to switch some seats around. And as we've done with our high school program, we want to highlight for you how we've approached instruction during the hybrid, the hybrid learning model that we've been following since September. So we're pleased to introduce Tanya Wilson, Jim Scoog, and Karen Bartlett, who are with us this evening. And David will pull up the presentation. Adam will also stay up here with us tonight. And this is how we're going to kick off our superintendent's report, so.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. Good evening. We're here this evening to share with you a day in the life of pandemic elementary school. We would like to thank the Board of Education, the Central Office Team, Josh Colwell Block, staff developers, teachers, staff, and parents, and students for making our full-time, mostly in-person instruction and school experience possible for our youngest students. So in August, when we presented to you our reopening plan, we were somewhat confident that we could pull it off. And I say the word somewhat because we were missing one part of the plan, and that was the students. We wondered, will they be able to keep their masks on for extended periods? How are they going to distance when they are in their development at such a young age? And what about touching? They touch everything. And the questions kept coming. While needless to say, it has been truly amazing to see the staff and students interact with each other every school day. It has come with its challenges, but it's truly been a rewarding success for all three of our school communities. And I'm just real up on that side. Okay. So we're going to talk about the following. This was a very similar agenda to the one we had in August. So there's health and safety, our arrival process, instructional spaces, our instructional program and cohort model, service providers, special area classes, lunch and recess, technology, and professional development. So we'll start with health and safety.
So good evening. So the Chappaqua schools have taken the lead on how to successfully open an elementary school. This evening, we're going to speak to you and take, you're going to take a peek into our schools to see what they look like during the global pandemic. So first, we have been diligent about health and safety when working with our children, our families, faculty and staff. The day begins for all with a check-in to Aperu, and this management system has allowed us to quickly assess the health of students, faculty and staff, and to determine daily entry. Once our students arrive, temperatures are taken, and the children are off to their respective classes. We'd be remiss if we didn't mention our custodial teams, who have been instrumental in maintaining stellar clean environments for each of our rooms. Their teams have kept high-touch areas clean, and they've maintained a level that is notably probably the biggest reason why we've been able to stay open. In addition, our school nurses are on-site each day managing the health of students and faculty. They've also become a big part of ensuring parent understanding for COVID-19 and all that it encompasses. So these two groups of people have been the foundation to this massive effort.
Tanya, could I just add? We also talked about another silver lining, and there are many to pandemic elementary school. But one is that kids and teachers aren't the sick. There aren't as many colds and stomach viruses and, you know, this health and safety protocol that we have, protocols that we have in place, I think, has really, in general, helped our overall health.
Absolutely. So now we're looking at the slide about arrival and dismissal. So each day, school personnel from all three elementary schools greet smiling and extremely happy children and parents. We have bus riders, and now with the pandemic, many families driving students to school. We thank the families for their patience, as many campuses process well over 200 cars or more in about 15 to 20 minutes each morning and afternoon. And although the traffic dynamic has temporarily changed due to our current circumstance, it has afforded us all the opportunity to have direct interaction with many of our parents on a daily basis. The connection has been a really great touch point for families each day. And to that end, with arrival and dismissal primarily through car, arrival, we have learned to contend with the weather. Fortunately, the Chappaqua School Foundation has taken note and given each elementary school big green golf umbrellas for ready needs, which have been very, very helpful.
Love that you're happy to come to school, Ayann. Have a great day.
I just didn't help it. That kid skipped into school, and he's not the only one.
Yes, yes. Very excited. We're very excited to be there. And finally, our learning space is then and now. So planning for the return for students was no easy task, of course. So those involved recognize the challenge of proper social distancing coupled with acknowledging that young children need room to grow and explore. To that point, our students came to school with the excitement and energy that accompanies young learners. So to our, I guess, you know, to our biggest surprise, they've come in, they've accepted the spaces and the rules that surround them. So they come in, they socially distance, they wear their mask, they do all the things that we ask them to do each day. Students and teachers have made the best of the situation. So these are our spaces with lots of good students in the spaces, and that's what it looks like. The schools represent a place of joy and many unlikely places, such as classrooms in the gyms and in DLCs. And we thank our teachers for being so flexible and willing to make the plan work with space.
So this was a slide from our original presentation back in August talking about this vision that we had for remote learning and a cohort model. And we described it, and I don't know if we were 100% sure that it would work, but I think we trusted in Josh Colwell Block's foresight and the committee that he put together, the TAPE Committee, which was Technology-Assisted Post-Pandemic Education, and thought about what we would actually need to make this model work and got out in front of everybody else. And we were really well situated with all the technology that we needed to make this cohort model work, and also fortunate enough to have hired additional staff, building subs, and partnered with our existing staff, including teacher aides who have really stepped up to become supervisors in some of the cohort classrooms. So it's really working beautifully, and is there anything? Do you want to add anything to that, guys? I mean, it's just, it's a cooperation of many, many people and the flexibility of some teacher aides and building subs that were just kind of thrown into these positions, and they're taking on the challenges supervising kids.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about the technology as it relates to that later.
So in this slide, I wanted to point out what it actually looks like when classroom teachers are delivering instruction to the kids sitting in front of them physically on-site, to the kids at home remotely. And you can see that band of photographs across the top where the red X light is where Sandy Schassler is teaching, and the kids that are remote in-school also, and how skillfully they've been able to toggle between these three groups of kids, for the most part, and really maintain the rigor and robust programs that we have for our students. So these are some pictures from what typical instruction looks like. And, you know, I have to say, Tanya and Jim and I talked about it. Not much has been sacrificed, again, with the robust, great curriculum programs that we have. And I think we were concerned a lot about, you go back for a minute, Jim, the human side of teaching and how that could be lost in some remote situations. But the photograph in the middle, I happened to observe a lesson where the teacher was teaching about how poetry evokes emotion, and that if you select topics that really have some meaning to you, it's probably going to evoke emotion for you and make you feel a certain way. And this little boy teared up in the middle of her conference with him, and it was a really touching moment, and it just reassured me that even, even in a remote situation, he was at home, she was in school, she was able to say, you know, clear the breakout room, the other kids left, and kind of helped this little guy work through the feelings he was having. In the top, you see a lesson, a writing lesson with the heart on the screen. They're circling the heart of a narrative story to expand on it. Student writing is robust, the mathematics continues, and opportunities for Makerspace projects, although we don't use the Makerspace with groups of kids, we continue some of the projects in the classroom. And here are some other examples. The top left, the students using digital manipulatives to support our Math and Focus curriculum, Science 21, so we still can offer hands-on, engaging, interactive lessons that we know keep kids engaged. And there's a small opportunity for some shared writing experiences in kindergarten as they swarmed the teacher when I was there one day.
On the left there, we also have some outside programming, Author's Day, and other programs that come in virtually to engage our students.
I wanted to just point out too, one other image on this slide, this little boy reading the book up in the top right. So kids continue the book shopping process. And at first, teachers were concerned about books being quarantined, but they've got it down to a science, and kids shop for books in most grades at least once a week and trade out the books that they've read into a bin where they sit for two or three days in quarantine until they can be recycled back into the classroom libraries. So we haven't had to give up anything that has to do with independent reading, which we know is really important to the acquisition of early literacy.
So our elementary schools also have the following service providers who work with our students, who require specialized instruction as outlined in their IDP or as driven by building-level service. So these services include counseling through our school psychologists, speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, reading support, and English as a new language services. And again, they're delivered in a hybrid model. So there might be one or two students in person and one or two students remote, and they are working together with the service provider in real time. They have flexible schedules, and as you can see, students are distanced, masked, and occasionally plexiglass shields if they can distance. And our providers also push in to the classroom to provide those services as well for, to generalize the skills that they're learning. Specials programming. We've had to get very creative with our specials, music, library, gym, and art. And as you can see here, students are getting a pretty robust specials program. Every student in the building has the same special on a given number day. So library and art, our talk via Zoom and other interactive platforms, whereas physical education and music, music's in the middle, PE on the left, can be taught outside, weather permitting, in a large group with supportive adults, cohort support teachers as well, supporting the music teacher and the PE teacher. And for those students who are remote, when the kids are outside, the PE teachers and music teacher provide asynchronous lesson that they can engage with at home. So that's some of our specials.
That's another group to give a big shout out to because the speciality teachers are also cohort supervisors and have really taken on the role of elementary school classroom teacher, which has really been fantastic, impressed.
And of course, lunch and recess are a big part of the elementary day. So prior to the change in the Health Department guidance, which was just a few weeks ago, Christine engaged us in having students come out of the classroom because they were eating in the classroom every day at their desk where they're learning. So this was a welcome change for everybody. And it was, it also supported the safety of everyone as well. So we moved them into our larger spaces, and we're still able to maintain a greater distance than we did in the classroom. So students are unmasked and eating with shields in between. And students order lunch, who order lunch from school, get it delivered right to that space, and it's prepackaged and ready to be eaten. I would like to thank Director McManus and her team for their flexibility and support while providing nutritious meals for our students each day. And prior to the snow and cold temperatures, you can see there on the left, and weather permitting, students eat lunch outside al fresco style. On rainy days and extremely cold days, students have recess indoors. Otherwise, they are outside, snow pants and all. And finally, technology integration and reliance on it have been pivotal to the success of our hybrid program. And I use the word reliance because if we did not have, we would not be able to provide this rich learning experience for our students if we didn't have the technology. The infrastructure, the hardware, and the platforms are robust, and several different technology and the high level of connectivity and collaboration have resulted from students and teachers engaging in this. So our teachers are using several different technology platforms to deliver instruction, as you can see here, while students use the same platforms to post their work, collaborate with one another, and to access their curriculum materials. The most powerful aspect of having access to all these platforms is that when students and teachers needed to quarantine, the teaching and learning seamlessly continued from home and in school, so they were set up. If they had to go on a moment's notice and teach from home or learn from home, they could do that successfully. And I'm particularly excited to see the impact of technology and its continued use post-pandemic in the classroom.
So we all know that we are incredibly fortunate to have the professional development that we have for ourselves and for our staff. And both in-house, you know, our staff developers, Jen Thompson, Ellen Moskowitz, Lisa Alton, Justin Olive, Mary Devane, you know, they're just ready to answer any question. If they don't know the answer, they find out. I've never worked with a more supportive staff development team. They're always ready. Jamie and, Jamie Allen and Jen Thompson have been keeping our PD alive with the reading and writing project and have offered a choice, and teachers sign up for times, and it's become more personalized, and it's really been well-received. But also, most recently, we tried to, not we tried to, we offered more choice for teachers. We're always talking to teachers about how important it is to provide choice for our students. And so our elementary faculty meeting, which got canceled yesterday unfortunately, but we'll add it to the March meeting. It's a choice board with opportunities to choose something on SEL, or there was math, there's Black History Month teaching. Mary Devane offered a mindfulness, Karen Smith was on there, some PD work around our classroom libraries, the windows and mirrors libraries. So this PD model, we wanted to extend to faculty meetings because we thought it was really important to have teachers choose. We also continue to have Shelley Dubois support our Math and Focus professional development. And Justin and Debbie also have been teaming to offer more PD around Science 21. We've had book clubs, and it's just an incredible model. And I think people are always on their toes and always willing to learn and thinking about forward movement.
Right. And one just note that I'm sure you've seen in the news recently that there's a big push now to get students back full-time. CDC is coming out with new guidance on Friday for that. And districts, even around the county and around the country, are just starting to have conversations now, so onto the planning conversations we've had back in August to get all kids in. So we're really proud to and appreciate the support of the board and the Central Office Team to be able to do this for students. And keeping it fun with the elementary.
Yeah, yeah, we had to, that's why then, because, and we all have a little something to say here because at the end of the day, we're dealing with, you know, some four-year-olds, but to 10-year-olds, some 10-year-olds. And they need to come to a place that's happy and safe and engaging and enlivened. And, you know, we work hard to do that. And just to, it's been so rewarding just to see kids enter the building every day, like nothing's wrong. And we included, which we'll play in a minute, teachers working to build community and keep that culture alive. One of our teachers has, every Friday, right before dismissal, it's the dance party, was just one small example of how we understand that these are still little kids, and we want them to be happy.
Yeah, particularly, it's Valentine's, and they're very excited about that. So we are celebrating, they're still exchanging, but they're putting them in a bag. We're stapling it, they're going to quarantine their cars for three days, and then they can open them at home. So even though we have this pandemic and we have these challenges, we're trying to preserve a lot of what students, some of the fun things that they've been doing.
Absolutely. And today at Boring Brook, we have, to celebrate World Rita Lab Day, we have a visit from Biscuit. You can see, he's right there. He was in a kindergarten class, so the kids, when he walked in, I mean, the children jumped out of their seats. They were so very excited to see Biscuit. So, you know, we're trying to do those things for them, and also for Halloween. We did things a little bit differently. So we had all of our students participate in a pumpkin carving contest, and they decorated a front of Boring Brook to celebrate the season. So that was also a really nice way for kids to feel there was some sense of normalcy.
There's always that too-cool-for-school group that won't dance.
So that concludes our presentation of elementary, a day in the life of elementary, a pandemic elementary in school.
Thank you, that was very happy. Any one have questions?
I don't have a question, but just the comment, which is thank you. As a board member and also an elementary parent, I had really high expectations going into this year, and they've been exceeded in every way. And I've heard that from so many parents. And the kids are so, so happy, so thank you.
We're just happy there and every day.
We continually hear, at least I do around town, how lucky that everyone feels, how blessed that we have full-day elementary school here, how important it's been for the mental health of all the kids and their parents and everyone. And all of you have worked so incredibly hard and are all really, really grateful to you, to the teams that made this possible. And just to see that you really do make it seem like we can carry on as normal as possible through these very challenging times, so thank you, really.
You know what, I forgot to mention an important point you just reminded me. We recently administered the TC reading assessment, the benchmark assessment. And that data, along with the NWEA data, suggests that kids are meeting grade-level benchmarks. So that too has, you know, been helpful. They're not just happy, they're actually learning.
That was actually going to be one of my questions. And I was, we did hear about that ELA and MAC State tests. We got that information, and in fact, it looked like the scores had gone up. I don't know if I'm recalling that.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, right. And so I also wanted to ask you whether, if you compare pre-COVID to the experience of post-COVID, how do you compare the level of programming that you've been able to deliver? Are there aspects of it that are not possible to have right now? And the converse of that, are there other things that you're able to do with the new technology that allows you to do more than you were doing before? So just a little bit of contrast and compare.
I mean, I can think that right now, there's a lot of out-of-the-box thinking going on in classrooms, which gives you a different lens than a table in education. So just some of the things that the kids have been doing in terms of technology, it's amazing. They're using padlets, they're using jam boards with ease. So I think that alone speaks to, there is a silver lining to this, and there are things that the students now are doing that they were not doing before.
Right. I mean, even for the adults transitioning, or having or meeting and having to go to a central location to meet and travel and do all that, whereas we're all together and a snap of a finger, the same students are collaborating together, either a breakout group or with their teacher and the kids at home, pretty instantly. So it's actually, we're getting back a little bit of time in some of the transitions that typically happen during the elementary day. And something as simple as lunch, they're not going to the cafeteria, they're not going to the kitchen to get their lunch. So that's like 10 found minutes of them having time to not be rushed at lunch and socialize a bit more than they have. So there are, there are things that are byproducts that we didn't even realize could be possible, just little things like that.
The teachers are working so hard.
Very hard.
It's an incredible challenge for them to, you know, not just decide what their lesson plan looks like, but how they're delivering that to. plan looks like, but how they're delivering that to the three different groups of kids effectively and monitoring everybody and trying to reach every child that needs help at the same time. And I think in that way, it's a challenge. And for me, what I've missed most is seeing kids, like just let them go, and groups of kids collaborating to problem solve, and, you know, the Makerspace and STEM activities that were really engaging, that yes, you can collaborate digitally in the Jamboard platforms of the world, but, you know, there's nothing like seeing kids, you know, come upon an aha moment live together, up close and personal. And so I hope we get back to that.
But I guess also for our remote learners, you know, I've had conversations with several families who are still remote, and I've observed classrooms where there are students that are remote, and I cannot believe how well some of the children have been able to adopt to that environment with ease, like first graders, able to manage their materials and learn and be a part of the classroom. So I think that's another piece of it, you know, we have remote learners who are doing a really good job remotely again, and it's really impressive.
I was particularly glad to see that little snippet you showed of the boy, I think they were doing a poetry segment, and the teacher was able to connect with him when he was having a moment. And I think, you know, the mental health aspect is so important, and it's great to see that the teachers can connect with those kids who are remote. And I hope that we're able to provide those opportunities, especially for those kids, because, you know, again, those are the ones that I worry about the most, who are a little bit more isolated than the ones who are coming in. And, you know, to make sure that they're doing, you know, doing okay emotionally as well as they're doing.
I have a question and comment. First question, actually, two questions. First, what's the percentage of students that attend this age in your schools?
I'm sorry, Mark?
What is the percentage of students' attendance at each of your individual schools?
Okay, well, I know we have 391 students enrolled at West Orchard. There are 60 who are currently either remote, full-time, or remote for the week. So in that fluctuate, it's week to week.
We're 432, and I think we had 81 remote today, and that changes 10 or 10 up or 10 down, depending on the week.
918 students, and this week, I have 52 remote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have 52 students that are remote this week.
But they're actually all in attendance technically.
I mean, physically.
I know.
Okay, Mary, that's a good percentage. The second question is, at the beginning of the year, you're running into some ideas of what you want to do. Is there anything that you wanted to implement that you've not been able to, that you think you should be able to? Is there something you want to do?
That's a good question. I've stuffed Jim Scoot. No, I mean, if we had like double, I mean, we have so much space, which is great, you know, that's one of the reasons I think we put out to do this. But more space is always better, especially for when we need to keep students inside for recess, they need to move around. But doing something different, I don't think so.
Carol, do you want to talk about exploring that outdoor permanent space option?
Yeah. So I think it'd be really cool to have a pole barn. There's one that I've looked at a couple of times at Bedford Village Elementary School. It's about 50 by 100 post-in-beam construction with a half-wall. So you could literally have a whole grade level out there. One group could be playing kickball, and the other group could be, you know, at picnic tables on the other end drawing. And it's all natural lighting, there's skylights in the ceiling, so you don't need any electric. And I did work there when they built the pole barn, and it was just, you know, there was always outdoor recess and other events too. And they look beautiful.
So Erica, Ira, and Joe Gomano have been looking at, like, if we were to have spaces like that at all three elementary schools' permanent structures, how much that would cost, and whether or not that's feasible within our budget, if we would consider that something that Joe would want to bring to the facilities committee, and then we would talk about it, who would leverage our grant partners to support something like that? Do they do think next year, while I think things may be different, I think some things will be similar, and we'll be able, we're going to need to use our outdoor space? And if we could put a structure like that in place permanently, that would be something that would exist beyond the pandemic, that we would be able to use for classroom space and for recess space. So I think that that would be one area that we've been talking about, that if we have a space like that right now, we would be using it.
That sounds like a wonderful idea.
Especially, Carol, if you've seen it in action, I mean, it sounds very appealing, the way you describe it, and especially the fact that we'd be able to use it into the future. I think I'd be very interested in.
I have pictures, I'll send them to you.
And was that used into the winter months as well?
Yeah, only around, I mean, it's great for the heat too. It offers a large area of shade.
So, oh, I'm sorry. One of the things I did want to say is that you have like moments that you remember in your career, and because of the work of this team, I have one of those moments. So I remember the first day we were welcoming students back, and I was at Boring Brook with Tanya, and I was doing like temperature screening, and I let a little kindergartner out of her car, and her parents looked at me, and they teared up, and they said, this is her first day of kindergarten, thank you and your team for making sure that she could experience it in school. And I don't know many other places or many other superintendents that were able to have that interaction with families. And the reason we were able to do that is because of our leadership team and the work that they did over the summer and the determination that they had to open up our doors for our students, which we know was critically important for elementary-level kids. And even when it got tougher than we anticipated, our principal team, anchored by our elementary leadership team, remained steadfast in making sure that we could open these buildings up for our kids. And when they had the opportunity to transition, have a longer transition to full-time, where we would, like we had to do at the middle level, I afforded that to this team as well, where we would expand that an additional two weeks, they chose to bring everyone back immediately as soon as they could. So I just want to acknowledge my leadership and thank them publicly in front of the Board and in front of the community for putting our kids first and for providing an environment where our students would have the opportunity to go to school every day and learn and grow in a way that they deserve to. So thank you for that, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we want to include you in that too, Christine, with the whole team. And I know that, you know, it wasn't always easy, but it was just incredibly impressive how you remained, all of you remained very positive and steadfast and made it happen. So we are very, very eternally grateful for what you've done, really gone over and above.
Thank you. Christine said something along the lines, never in my career, dot, dot, dot. You heard that a lot this year. Mostly positive, but also challenging, but yeah, like none other this year, but it's been amazing.
Great, thank you. Anything else to the principals? Well, thank you, Gary, very much, I love you. Appreciate it, have a nice night. We're just going to transition back up, and David, we're going to pull up the superintendent's report now, and then we'll go through that, and then I'll talk about the safety plan and the district.
Looking to.
All right, so. So we're going to begin our community update as we always do and talk about our schedule and our attendance. So obviously, we're still in the same place, we have 100% of our students eligible to attend K through eight. 50% of our high school students can come in the morning, and the other 50% are able to come in the afternoon. And we do have pockets of kids who come for a full day based on their own individual needs. This meeting, I decided to put last meeting's attendance of fully remote kids versus this meeting's attendance, so you can see a comparison. I thought that would probably be more interesting than just showing what the numbers were moving forward. So you can see it's been pretty consistent, K through eight, with the exception of sixth grade, we had a number of students who chose to go remote this week. So I'll be interested at our next meeting to see if that number stays the same, that could be related to vacationing in the upcoming February break. But if we see that the same pattern continues going into the weeks after February break, we'll have to do some more investigation to figure out why so many kids transitioned to remote at this particular time. You'll see, because Andrew had made a pitch to try to encourage more students to come to Greeley for their assigned time, we do have a slight decrease in the number of students who are remote, and hopefully that will continue moving forward. Tony, I don't think we have any staffing updates from the last meeting, so everything has remained pretty consistent, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, so if you look at our quarantine numbers, this is what we presented at our last meeting on January 27th, and then if you look at our quarantine numbers today, you'll see there's been a significant drop in the number of students who have had to quarantine. And that is because of the new Department of Health guidelines of who they would consider a close contact in the context of school. So I anticipate that it will probably stay this way moving forward. So I did want to share with the community that we have gone through our second round of testing our higher-risk sports athletes. So we had a special meeting last week where the Board of Education acted on a resolution approving higher-risk sports to move forward, which was required by the Westchester Department of Health. So at that meeting, the Board of Education approved wrestling, ice hockey, competition, cheerleading, and basketball. And so part of the resolution included the caveat that in order for those sports to move forward, that the superintendent had the authority to test those students. And because we had the binax test in stock through the Department of Health, we moved forward with the testing process. And I want to thank Adam and Josh, Adam's professional development team, and Jason for helping organize and support our testing process that was conducted by our nursing team under the supervision of Dr. Levine. So we had our first round of testing last week, and we have moved into our second round of testing today, both of which have run really smoothly, and now we're in our second week of athletics. Tony, I wanted you, if you could please talk about, now we're going to move into the agenda, so if you could talk about the RFP.
Sure, thank you very much, Christine. I think we touched on this during our last meeting, to let you know that we had received a couple of submissions based on the RFP that went out at the end of December. So the submissions that were received, one did not meet the budget that we were anticipating because it was quite extraordinary, based on what they submitted and what they outlined that they would be working out with us over $2 million, or approximately $2 million. And the other submission just didn't really align with our goals, and their resources didn't seem to be a good fit for our priorities. So we're going to resubmit the RFP. We've also taken the opportunity to get some feedback from a couple of organizations that do this work, because what we, some initial feedback was, most of this work is happening at the higher ed level, right, at college level. And so how can we tweak some of the language to entice folks who may be currently doing that but can scale it down for the K-12 continuum? So that feedback was really quite helpful, actually. And so we're in the process of revising it so that it can be, with your approval, re-submitted proposal acceptance.
And then, Tony, can you just highlight the Unity Day light today?
Oh, why not, thank you. I didn't know you were going to. I'm so excited. We had a Unity Day light today, which was put on by a group of student groups under the supervision of Tinugue Culpa here at the high school, and it was such an amazing afternoon. We had a keynote speaker, you see her picture there, it's Dr. Erica Buchanan Rivera. She spoke about the concept of allyship, and she just presented such concrete ideas for how kids can be allies and how they can really commit to this work in a way that is appropriate for them at their age and based on, you know, the work that they do, especially as it relates to their own identity. The kids then had the opportunity to participate in two breakout sessions that were totally facilitated by our kids. Faculty and staff were there to control the Zoom, let kids in, monitor what was going on, but the kids facilitated conversations. So the first round of sessions were to debrief and unpack the keynote, and then the second round were focused on different topics like microaggressions and allyship and white privilege. Students partnered, and they facilitated the conversation. They worked together to develop the questions, they worked together to develop a framework, norms for the day, and it was really so incredible to watch them facilitate this work. And they also administered exit tickets at the end of every session to get feedback from the students. Some of the feedback was, I believe we need to continue our uncomfortable conversations and make sure we discuss these things in school. As a school, I think that we should be engaging in more sessions like this. I think we should continue to have days like this where groups can lead the school, groups of students, just really great feedback. The kids were excited to participate. And so we'll be doing Unity Day probably in June. So this was just Unity Day light, and it extended beyond the BSU. The BSU partnered with Alliance and Women's Group and a couple of other groups to put on this event. And so thank you to Tinugue and to Jen Thompson, who worked really hard to put together the schedule for the day and organized all the sessions. It was really a wonderful afternoon of learning.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, so I wanted to also, this is the meeting where I am updating the Board of Education and the community on any incidents that have occurred during quarter two that would fall under the category of speech bias or discrimination. And so you'll see that I have two incidents to report. One occurred at the elementary level that we would classify as bias, and the other occurred recently in continuing education class that we would consider an hate speech. I felt it was important, even though continuing education is almost like a branch class of the district that's composed of students throughout the region, I think because it is a part of our organization, that it's, that I should, it's appropriate for me to include that on our reporting this evening. So in terms of the middle school and high school, students and staff, we don't have any incidents to report tonight from quarter two. And none of the incidents that are articulated above would fall under the code of conduct criteria would be notified in this whole program. And then Adam, would you please talk about?
Sure. Yeah, so we have four grants on the agenda tonight. The first two are from our friends over at ExxonMobil on the Newcastle side of town. They're donating $500 for the Grathlin birthday supplies. And over on the West Orchard side of town, courtesy of Millwood Auto Center, they're donating $500, which will be applied towards the science and math program. So we appreciate those gifts certainly, and thanks to ExxonMobil. And we also have two CSF grants on the agenda. One is 5.4, and this is a great opportunity for our eighth-grade social studies students. The CSF is going to donate the funds, which is going to allow us to have a Japanese-American speaker who was incarcerated in the Japanese internment camps, or American internment camps for Japanese-Americans during World War II. So he is actually going to come in and speak, and we're going to be able to do that for both Bell and Seven Bridges for the eighth-grade students. And then 5.5, you'll see, is to enhance our computer science program. We're going to buy some Sphero's, which are small robots that the students can practice their programming language to code the robots to move. So that was submitted by Jenny Gierks. Those are the four that you have on the agenda.
So I wanted to just update the Board of Education. There is a resolution on the agenda to expand the services of one of our contractors who's working on the Zoder property approval. So we received comments back from the DEP, and there's additional work that needs to be done by one of our agencies that's working on the project. So the resolution asked the Board to authorize us to expend more money to cover the work that now needs to be done. That was unanticipated due to the DEP's comments on our application that needs to be approved by them in order for us to submit our final application to the planning board. Okay, and that ends the superintendent's report. So David, if you could please go to the draft amendment to the safety plan. Okay. I don't know, I can't, you're going to have to scroll down. How am I going to do this? Are you going to scroll down for me?
Yes.
All right, go to the second page. Okay, so. Okay, so wait, go up to the first page.
So Christine, before you start, I just want to clarify. This is a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to do that.
For the state.
Yes, okay, yeah, I'm going to do that right now. Okay, so the New York State Education Department, at the end of the first semester, required that all school districts amend their safety plans that are approved annually to include a response to a public health crisis. And so to amend our safety plan, it has to go through specific steps. So in addition to normal steps that we would have to follow, they added certain criteria that were unique because we're currently within a pandemic and they are having us plan for the pandemic while we're in the midst of it. So what happened was they shared with public schools certain areas that they wanted us to address in our pandemic amendment. And then they required us to run our proposed amendment to the safety plan by our union officials, our union presidents, and we have multiple union units here. And then run our pandemic plan through our district safety team. Both of those things have been done for feedback. And then we would present the amendment to the plan at a hearing, which is now we're doing, for the community to hear. And then that would be posted on the webpage for 30 days before it would be presented to the Board for Final Adoption. So that the Board of Education or the superintendent could receive feedback from the community prior to determining the amendment to the plan. So we're at a place where we're going to go through a pandemic plan that has been in place since the pandemic started, but the State Department wants it in writing and posted on the website. That's really what this is. And all the components of this are required to be addressed within the context of the plan. Okay? All right, so we're going to open the public hearing and then close it after this is done. And then we'll be into the comment period where people will have 30 days to make comments.
Okay, so Christine, I would take motions to open that.
Thank you.
And then you'll make a presentation.
Yeah.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's hearing on the proposed amendment to the district-wide safety plan for 2020, 2021? May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye. Okay, so the hearing is your line, hold it.
Okay, so the first part of the plan is language that requires us to do it. So now we'll go into the plan itself. So the first thing we needed to do was we had to define certain aspects of the plan. So we had to define who would an essential employee be. And these would be people that would report to work. If we had to, if I had to close the buildings, there are certain people that need to be onsite to be able to make sure that district functioned. Then I had to define who were non-essential employees. Then we had to define what was a communicable disease. David, if you could go down, please. And then we had to define what PPE was. So then I had to go through and list who the essential employees would be. And so basically, on our first list, is anyone who worked when we had our closure happen in the district. So the people who still needed to report onsite were the administrators, the secretaries, the custodians. If you can go down a little bit, David. The security personnel and food services. Because everyone has a function that needs to happen at school in order for our program to be maintained. So what we did, and what we would continue to do if the governor ordered a closure, is I would be operating under their parameters. So we would stagger when staff are coming in if we needed to reduce the amount of staff onsite. So we went through that process. So what I've done here is just identify if we have to close our buildings and students cannot attend school, these would be the people who would still report to work under the conditions at which it was safe for them to report. Now, there was a time when we closed initially and no one was at work because it wasn't safe. But then gradually people came back in. So this is, who is going to gradually come back into work? Or who is going to be reduced but still have to report to work when school, when students aren't able to attend school on campus? And the second group are the non-essential employees. And these are the employees who will work remotely. So these are our teachers, these are our specialized staff. There are support staff like our nurses, our teacher aides, and our building subs if our building subs are supporting cohorts. And this section of staff may be reduced based on need. So if we close the building, we may not need all our TAs, we may not need all our subs. And so this staff can be reduced by us if we feel that that's warranted based on the crisis that we're experiencing. Okay, so then we had to articulate how we're going to give access to people to be able to work remotely. So then I just shared on this document how we did that. We provided devices, we provided Wi-Fi access for people who needed it. We provided a system for equipment repair on campus that was, that was non-contact. And then we shared the ways that we would communicate with our students, which was our primary platforms. And then we articulated how we would push out software to students and staff if we needed to do that. If you can go down. And then we had to share how, what would our communication system be for our families who needed support? So we had to talk about like how we would handle the phone, how we would handle the email, how we would use the website. If you keep going down, David. Okay. And then, if you could go down more. Then we had to talk about how we would help families who needed help accessing the remote program. So I just listed what we did when we closed, right? So we had a, we had a drop off place for equipment. We went out and we provided Wi-Fi ports for kids that needed it. We provided technology for kids who didn't have it. And then I had to articulate some of the same things that I had to share for the remote access for the teachers, like the primary communication platforms and how we would help support students if we had to update their devices. And then I had to talk about the process that we would go through if we had to start to reduce the essential staff onsite. And then articulate the expectation as if the essential staff onsite was reduced, there would be the expectation that they would be working remotely when they weren't here. And if you could go down a little bit more, David. And then we had to, we were given PPE requirements that we needed to meet for a six-month period. So Joe had to secure all of this PPE, which he has done, and where would be any storing it in his office. So I had to articulate that. So if you go down a little bit further, this is all prescribed for us by State Ed. Keep going. And then I had to write out how we would handle an exposure. And we've gone over that a great length here. We've been dealing with that all year long. So you can see that I've assigned people certain tasks. This is based on exactly what we're doing right now. If you go down, David. And then I just articulated our step process for how we handle these, basically how we handle COVID exposures. And then finally, I had to talk about how we would handle staff if they, that's it, or they had exposure. So I worked through like if staff had to be tested, if they had to be treated, if they had to be in isolation, if they had to quarantine. So basically, in every situation, staff would be able to work remotely. They would be able to access their sick time with the exception of quarantine. I delineated between giving the district the opportunity to allow staff to work remotely if they were exposed at work versus if they made a choice outside of work that exposed them, whether or not they would be able to work remotely or have to use their sick time, with the understanding that everything that I shared would be subject to adjustment if the governor passed an executive order or there was some kind of regulation that we needed to follow, which has happened, federal regulation, which has happened throughout the pandemic. So I think, that might be my, oh, and then finally, this, we just had to do it. I had to provide emergency housing in case we needed it. And so this is kind of, so it's basically going to be a really, I mean, the maintenance building, but this is more like, you know, there are a lot of public residential schools. So you have to be thinking, so when they say you need to, they apply the same standards to all public schools. So here we are articulating how we would house people if we needed to. However, I don't, I don't see that happening here, but this would more apply to what the public residential program and where they would house people if they have some kind of outbreak on our campus. But if we do have to house people, this is, that's where we would do it. Okay, and so that is the pandemic plan, draft for the amendment to our safety plan for your consideration and the community's consideration. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Christine. I'm puzzled by the emergency housing section. So this was mainly for residential schools?
That's my assumption.
But yet all schools were required to provide a housing plan? I mean, that is really, I mean, that is the greatest mandate I've ever heard of. Are they considering housing, like overnight housing? I don't, don't understand.
Yeah, there's not a lot of language around who this would be, who this is intended to serve. But I also know that without this within our plan, it will be rejected.
Right, I understand that.
I can say that we provide, at times, space for our maintenance staff to stay when we have severe weather events. So I kind of viewed it in that way. But I don't see a situation where we're in a public health crisis where we're going to have to provide housing for staff. But in the event that we do, maybe there's some significant cleaning that needs to be happened, and there's got to be overnight shifts. This is, this is how we do it.
Okay. To speculate, there could be a travel restriction that could be put in place. I can imagine where somebody's, even if they shut down all public transportation, if someone realizes or something like that.
There could be a multitude of reasons. It would just have been helpful had they articulated those reasons so that you could, and all districts could have a provision that would actually be able to address the reasons, but.
Yeah, I assume it's, that if somebody's exposed, they have to be provided quarantine housing.
I, that wouldn't be my impression because I don't know how we would do that safely. It would be in the event that people would need to stay overnight there to do their job.
But it's pretty consistent with how we've had to operate, which is with very unclear guidance and sort of making sense of it for ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, this is who we're talking about. We're talking about the essential employees, so the administrators and custodians.
So it would be for them, right?
Yeah.
That would be not for some of the need that would arise outside the school district community.
Right, so then that's where I think this would mostly apply to the custodial staff. You know, you need to stay onsite to keep the buildings running, and you can't travel offsite for some reason.
That makes sense.
I have two questions. One is, if there are those students on campus, why is the SRO essential?
That would be just in case we needed to have them. So if the, so we didn't have the SRO when we closed here. It went back and worked for the police. But in case we needed to have them on campus, I had to designate them as essential. Because once you, part of the plan is the only people on campus when there's a closure are essential staff, so I didn't want to exclude them from not being able to be on campus in case we needed them.
But I would assume that we could have police onsite if they were needed. I just, I look at the SRO as being necessary to support the students. And I don't, if they're not in the building, it doesn't seem as necessary. But, you know, I just.
Well, we had some issues with people trying to get on our property who shouldn't be here when the pandemic closed. So I'd rather have the language in here and not need it than not have the language in here and then need it.
That makes sense. My other question is, is there any leeway to put additional categories into this plan? Specifically, I'm thinking about mental health because when there's a global pandemic, you know, the students, we talk about mental health a lot with the loneliness and the isolation. And I'm wondering if there's a way to have that response in this plan?
So we can add whatever language we'd like in our, in our plan because it's, it's a document of the district as long as we meet their criteria, which we do based on the way that this plan is constructed.
So adjustments can be made as needed?
They can be. I just, I don't know if we want to include a mental health plan.
So as long as we need minimal requirements?
Yes.
So who would have thought a year ago we'd be doing this, right?
I know, I know. So I just, I want to say, I don't know if we want to add to a prescribed plan that we need to submit to the State Department. I think if we want to create our own document beyond our continuity of learning plan, which has that component within it, I think we should do that outside of the pandemic planning document because I think each situation will be nuanced. So unless we're going to just put a general paragraph in there that says that we will be working collectively to address the mental health needs of our students at the, in the event that we're dealing with a pandemic or a public health situation, I think that would be fine. But I think to dispel that out in the way that I've done in these required sections, I don't, I don't know if that would be the best way for us to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like for you to consider putting some language, even if it's kind of the basic referring to it. Because I, I feel that when we're talking about what are the essential functions that we're going to have for preparation, I think that it's been such a topic during this pandemic with students that I think it would make a nice statement to nobody else but the state that they, that's very, it's just as important as having masks to be thinking about mental health for students.
Okay, is there any other feedback?
Just, just to jump in on that. So when you stated here about the identification of essential positions that have to report to work, is it possible to put in, you're talking about that they're available, but like, are, call him on trip, you're saying that they have to be in the schools? Like, couldn't they be remote in terms of that? Or how does that fit in here?
I'm going to have to pull up, so there are non-essential employees, right? They can't, we can't have certain members of a unit be essential and other members of the unit be non-essential. That's not how it works. So I don't, I don't think I can specify that in a way that builds a plan, a mental health plan. That's not the purpose of this document. So I think.
You can have a side agreement about how we handle that that isn't something that has to be followed the state is saying.
It does not have to be included in the state's plan that we need to submit to them.
Right.
So I think if I was going to add anything, it would be some language that, based on what the public health emergency is, a team would get together and formulate a support plan to help students who need that level of support during the pandemic. Like, I don't, I don't want to get into the nuances of the high schools will do this, the middle school will do, it's a lot.
Right.
And I don't, they're not, that's kind of.
That's too prescribed for what this. That's too prescribed for what this plan is asking.
But I, right, so I think, and there's a lot to each different situation, right? So I think the way to do this is to acknowledge that mental health will be important and it will be at the forefront of our decision-making process when we have a public health emergency. So I'll, I'll draft some language up like that for when we, um, meet again to look at this for adoption.
So I guess, Christine, what you're saying is that we can provide all of the mental health functions without having to, um, specify them in this particular plan. Uh, we could detail that for ourselves and, uh, if I understand you correctly, the, the problem with putting it in this plan is that we might box ourselves into something where we don't have the flexibility to address the particular situation we might find ourselves in the future.
Right, and it is a. That's in part, and two is, this is a, this is a plan for the district that we have to submit to the state for approval. So we know that mental health is important to us and we've been doing, um, we've been taking many steps to help support our students who are struggling. We've done a lot of different things to help engage kids, to reach out to families, to, um, embrace high-risk students in a different way to ensure that they're receiving the attention they need in the middle of this pandemic, right? So I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want us to have to outline that kind of document that we have to submit to the state, because they are making us articulate how we're handling certain aspects of the pandemic, six months into the pandemic, right? Like, I, I don't want to spend a significant amount of time redoing a document that should have been, that they should have had us all do in the summer. So what I'd like to do is just acknowledge that mental health is important and that there'll be a, I'd like to come up with some language for your considerations, but I don't want to articulate out who's doing what, when they're doing it and how they're doing it. Like, I am in this plan for the other areas that are required to be in there. I don't think that's a good use of our time right now.
But I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned, I would say, in doing that, because we're adding to what the state is requiring. And I, um, I personally don't think that they've been very thoughtful about this, and I think that the local school districts have been extremely thoughtful about how they, how they've moved forward in this pandemic. And I'm just afraid of sending them something that they would then not really know what to do with and would then send us feedback as a result of that, requesting things that we don't think are essential. And so I've been worried about, um, wasting our resources and time and possibly then having to, to commit to various things that, you know, we don't believe in or we're just using our resources, um, in a way that's not effective. I, I guess I'm just saying, I don't know what would happen if we added to, to their requirements. I'm a little bit afraid, because I don't think they, they've thought through it themselves. Just, I guess, just simply to send them a message, right? So I just think that we need to outline what we're doing for ourselves.
It's also that it's not just to send me a message. If, this is going to be on the website, I, I think it is a priority to us and we're going to call this, you know, despite the failings or, uh, the disappointments we have in how the state has pushed this down and the timing, I wouldn't want us to be untrue to how important that is to us, because they didn't ask. But I, I definitely understand, I, I don't, I don't want to cause a cascade of additional work for a statement.
I'm not, I'm not sure that the issue is additional work. I, I just feel that the issue is restricting ourselves from providing what we feel is adequate and effective emotional health supports, because now we would have involved the state in, in, in that aspect by providing our plan.
I guess that's actually what concerns me, and I, obviously, I agree that the mental health is, is very important, um, but most of what's in here seems very sort of cut and dry in terms of protocol, in terms of these are essential workers and this is how we're supporting technology, and all of these things seem pretty, this is what we're doing. It, it doesn't allow for flexibility the same way, whereas I feel like the mental health piece of this is somewhere where we may really want flexibility and it may need to be tailored to the individual situation at hand, which, as we've all learned, we can't always anticipate. So I'm a little bit afraid that whatever is in this document is something we're locked into, and so whereas most of these things are pretty, I don't know, not, they're, they're not fluid aspects of a response plan. They're really just outlining, you know, who, what, when, where. I, I wouldn't want us to then feel like if the team felt like something different needed to happen in response to what mental health issues were arising at that moment, that we had to go by this because it wasn't a document. I guess that's my only reservation, not that it's not a legitimate area for concern, but that it's somewhere where we may not want the same structure of protocols.
I'd still be interested to see what, what Christine can come up with in the draft and then maybe.
Yeah, I was looking at the, um, the original safety plan. There's really nothing in there, like what you're sharing.
I, I guess my, my concern is that I, I agree with you, Holly. I'm not sure this is the right place for it. Um, it seems to me that what the state is asking for is, um, just like they say, essential workers, you know, grocery store workers in a pandemic, or who's allowed to go to work and who's essential in terms of boots-on-the-ground functionality of a building. I, I don't know, if, if, to me, if we're going to talk about that, we must have a mental health professional in the building, then that should be in the plan as an essential worker. But just to say what our view is in terms of how important it is, I'm not sure that that's what they're asking for in this document, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know.
Jane, your description's in line with our safety plan.
Right.
Like, our safety plan is really just like nuts and bolts. It doesn't dive into how we're going to respond in a crisis, student mental health, it just says that we are.
And if that's what our original safety plan is and they wanted to see how we are here, then again, I, I, I'm in favor of leaving it as is and not introducing that, but making sure that our families, with, with our focus on that, know where to find those resources and how they'll be available to them, as opposed to having it inserted into this document here, if not really asking for that.
If you look at this, this document is designed so people who work here know who need to go to work, who needs, who can work remotely, how we're going to treat sick time, making sure that we have the PPE that we need. Think of all the problems the districts had when we closed or when we tried to reopen. This document is designed to address, to make sure that districts have a plan in place for their staff if kids can't be in school. And that's really what this is. It's not, it's not designed to have school districts talk about how they're going to educate kids specifically during a, a public health crisis, or how they're going to support, support their emotional well-being. It's not, it's not, it's not designed that way. It's not for that.
We, we have that anyway. We have plans for that.
It's in our, it's in our continuity of learning.
Correct.
This is more like, what is the expectation for your staff if there's a closure?
So this is, this is our public hearing. We have 30, we have 30 days to think about this, right?
That's right.
So I think we should think about this for 30 days, but I agree, Jane.
But I, I think that Holly has a good point in the sense of, um, the importance of the community, understanding what our mental health priorities and plans are, so maybe that would be something to address, but perhaps in a different way. And we, we talk about mental health all the time at the board table. We, we have all said that.
Absolutely.
We, we've seen that presented by the administration, but, um, in the sense of making it as part of the pandemic, um, protocols, maybe we can look at that, but not as part of this, this document, which is very descriptive.
I also think that in terms of making sure that our families know what our priorities are and what the resources are that are available to them, I think you raise an interesting point, that we have to make sure that that information is accessible, and so I think that's more important on a website, on our website and in part of our continuity learning plan, or something that's pushed out through the district so that they will actually find it, as opposed to I'd be concerned that they would not be looking for it in this document.
Right, I, yeah. I would think that just highlighting it differently would actually make it more accessible. So maybe we could think about, hopefully, that would address your concern, because you want people to know what will happen and, um, so, so that the information is there. So doing it separately might be a better way to do that.
It could be, I just, when I, when I think in my head about what is our response and our plan for a pandemic, I, I just, I know that that's something that's kind of integrated in what we're thinking of, but given what this is titled, it just felt like, I mean, we talk about mental health, first aid and things like that, so it seemed as, in my mind, it seemed as basic as how are you going to, um, you know, how are you going to do the, uh, the steps with a positive case? And I wasn't thinking of anything detailed, but more like the general statement Christine had said she, she might think about, but I'll keep thinking on it.
I'll, I'll draft something too, but I'm just kidding. But we can add to the plan if you have the features to. Okay?
Okay, thank you. All right, so then the other, the other piece of the superintendent's report, wait. Before we move on, since it's a public hearing, are we supposed to ask people, do we want to take comment on the public hearing? Sure. Um, so at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments to, um, the superintendent's hearing on amendments to the district-wide safety plan? Please, if you do have comments, please come up to the microphone and, um, we will stick to our usual comment protocols of three minutes, uh, per person. Um, okay, seeing that there are no comments, uh, we will move on. I don't think we have to close anything, because you are not voting, so I think we can move on to the next item.
Hey, you opened it, so you should probably close it.
We have to close it? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Our district plan is, um, keeping us on the straight now. So may I have a motion to close the public hearing on the district-wide safety plan? Or you?
I'll start it.
Jane, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda under the superintendent's report, the final item, is the district calendar for 2021, '22. We didn't receive any community feedback regarding the proposed calendar, so I'm, I'm presenting it to you, um, in the same way that I did at our previous meeting when I, I shared the draft with you, so, um, if you, if you, does anyone have any, did anyone else receive any feedback?
Actually, I didn't get something from the board.
We have the correction to, um, one of the holidays.
We can get a letter.
Yeah. Oh, I know, okay. So one of, while I didn't get feedback directly, I know that there was a question about how we put holidays in the calendar. And so, um, I want to, I want to share that the way we build the calendar is there are required state and federal holidays that we need to place in there, that we have to, we can't have our employees working on those days. And then after we designate those days, then I, I sit down and I have to consider what days will, because of the community we live in, will attendance be impacted most by kids not being in school? And so that's how I place the remainder, remainder of the holidays in the calendar. So for example, um, Christmas is really the only religious holiday denoted under state regulation that we need to, we need to, we need to place in the calendar if it falls on a weekday. But we also, we wind up giving off the Jewish holidays. And that, one of the reasons why I make that recommendation to the board is I anticipate that many of our students will not attend on those days, because they will be celebrating with their families, or they'll be in a religious observance. So when I'm trying to build the calendar, I, I need to do it in a way that we have our students, students and staff attending school, our kids at least 180 days and our staff 185 days. So we have 185 total days in the calendar, so I can pull off five snow days. And then after that, I need to make sure that I give enough time within the calendar. So we end, we start school at a certain day and we end another certain day. So the holidays that we give off beyond the days that we are required to under state statute are done based on anticipated student attendance days and, and the impact that specific holidays will, will have on, on the number of students who will be able to attend. So, so for example, a question came up, here's a, a holiday that, um, my culture celebrates, could the board consider giving that holiday off next year? Well, the answer to that is, is that holiday, would that impact enough students that I would have to adjust the calendar in order to give that holiday off? And that's how you have to weigh those decisions out for the community, because we only have so many days within the calendar that can be a holiday under state regulatory mandates for the number of days students can be in attendance. So I, I, I don't want parents or kids to feel that it's not important to acknowledge and recognize days in their culture and in their religion that are important to them. It's just, I have to balance out how many kids will be impacted by a particular religious observance and make calendar decisions around that. And that's why certain days are off and, and other days aren't. But if we had a situation where we had a large number of students who would need to be off of school on a particular day because of observance, then I would take that in consideration when building the calendar. I mean, that's a long way of trying to explain that we have a certain number of days that we can have off, and I try to make those decisions and recommendations based on the, the number of students that it will impact, um, in terms of attendance.
And I think that was the one question. I think, I think that's very, very clear, Christine. I guess it's, um, it's difficult, because we want to be able to do that for every holiday, and if we do, then we won't have enough days, we won't have enough days in the calendar for the school year. And the, the only other alternative is to have, offer none of those days and, and have some days where there are just no students in school, which, um, which doesn't help the, um, those other, um, those others who want their holidays observed. So I, I think, I feel that it's a difficult situation, but I, I understand that we're up against the calendar and you, there are certain things that can't be changed in the Any other comments on? So since we are going to adopt the calendar, I suppose we should, I'd like to take a motion on item 1.2.2 regarding the district calendar for 2020, 2021.
I move.
A second?
2021, 20.
I'm sorry, um, 2021 and 2022. Isn't that what I said?
Yes, I move it.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions for Christine? Okay, so all in favor of adopting set calendar, please say aye.
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 Okay, anything else for your president's report? I mean, for your superintendent's report?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um.
Betty Rosa was named commissioner of education.
She was, she was made, I mean, she was acting commissioner and now she is, um, just made commissioner of education. So very, you know, congratulations to Betty Rosa. And, um, I'm not sure if there's a vacancy on the board of regions based on her moving from a.
I believe she resigned as chancellor and that was filled, and now she's, um, because she was enjoying commissioner of education.
Right, that was filled by one of the existing.
One of the existing regions.
Board of Regents, so there may be a vacancy on the board of Regents, but I'm not, I'm really not sure about that, but we're very happy to have, um, state ed commissioner, finally.
State ed commissioner again.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're ready to move to our committee reports. I guess I.
The, uh, the Green Committee is meeting tomorrow at 3:30, um, and. The Green Committee is meeting tomorrow at 3:30 and the Facilities Advisory Committee is meeting on Friday at 3:30.
And I'd like to report that on Monday, February 8th, there was a cares committee, which Holly is a part of and Christine and other administrators. And we had two presentations at that committee meeting. We had a PTA district-level diversity committee presentation. That committee is co-chaired by Ngazi Okasi and Catherine Good. And they reported on some of their work and they presented a survey on broadening participation of the BIPOC community in the PTA. And they talked about their goals and the results of the survey and issues of feelings of belonging and PTA participation and barriers that would explain nonparticipation. And secondly, we had a presentation by the CRE Education Group led by Candace Chestnut. And also with us were the co-chairs of the CRE, Shalminar and Zavvi Mirza. And they presented the culmination of a lot of work and extensive research they've done and all of their resources and had about 30 recommendations for the school districts. So I would like to recognize everyone for their work. We're very grateful for the contributions and we'll continue to partner with all these groups, committees, and stakeholders moving forward. Holly, do you have any?
I don't understand that. Can you send that out to us?
This was part of our cares committee. So we were talking about surveys that the PTA presented. So I don't, is that what you'd like to see? Because I don't have access to that.
The presentation of the CRE.
But the CRE, yes, they are going to send that to us and certainly forward that to the board. Holly, do you recall? I think they were going to finalize something or they were going to simply send it over?
I have a.
They were going to send it to Christine or.
I have it. I have it from when they presented to the administrators on board.
Okay, I think there was, they had changed it or they had.
Christine, I think they revised a little something. They did email it to us. The reason we haven't sent it out is we haven't received the PTA's presentation yet. So.
Send them both out together to the board. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. And they had an amazing amount of information to process. Really, really nice insights from the PTA into the reasons that folks are involved and what they are seeking and what they are getting from the PTA. So I thought that was really great information. I think everyone would be really interested to see that on the board, too. And then the recommendations from the CRE, they're amazingly researched and well-thought-out recommendations. And I look forward to getting a chance to talk more about them when you are on. I don't have anything else to add, though.
Right, until you see the recommendations, then I'm excited to see that.
I have a couple of committee reports, just rather quickly. Chappa School Foundation had a meeting on February 1st. Adam went through those grants very nicely. So we're very excited and really want to thank them for those two wonderful grants. I know that their traditional grants will be later on in the season, so I'm sure we'll be reporting back on those. But I think those are two really terrific opportunities for our students that are coming up. We met with the Health and Safety Committee on February 4th. Myself and Holly are representatives there and John runs that committee. We did go over their revisions, the pandemic revisions to our safety plan that we just went over during the hearing. The only thing that I really wanted to add was, again, as Holly mentioned, and this was mentioned during our committee, that many of the members really do want to address the mental health of our children and how it's been affected due to the isolation and lack of socialization during this time of the pandemic. So we did have some discussions about that, talking about whether it's possible to bring in perhaps additional speakers for the students and for the parents that we need to perhaps push out on the district level, some messaging to the parents as to what the resources and opportunities are. So I think that might tie in with what we were talking about. And that's something that maybe we can discuss and hopefully can report back on in our next meeting that we can address so that these resources are more readily accessible, available. I'm seeing if we need to add anything in light of what's going on. And perhaps, you know, that's even perhaps something that could be discussed with CSF in terms of the additional speaker and things like that, that could give the parents and the families more resources during this challenging time. So that was the focus of that. And there was also a sports boosters meeting last night. And again, I just wanted to say that Jason Simo said this and it was mentioned from the sports boosters as well, the tremendous effort on behalf of the administration, Christine, Adam, everyone that was there dealing with the testing so that we could get, you know, the higher-risk winter sports up and going. According to Jason Simo, that we now add 141 quote-unquote "high-risk" winter athletes and we now have over 300 for the winter season. So I think it's wonderful that the students are finding a way to participate and that our administrators are making this happen through our vigorous testing and the protocols that we've instituted. So a big thank you to everyone involved there. And I also just want to mention one initiative that the sports boosters have that I think is just a terrific idea called Fans in the Stans. I mean, anybody that watched the NBA season this year would know it would allow any of the fans, the parents, the kids, even elementary school kids that love to go to these games and can't be in attendance this year, to make those kind of hard work cutouts of themselves that will be there as it's, you know, live streams on local live. I mean, you can't get the great game noise. That would be unbelievable.
But they did it for the Super Bowl, so.
So we don't quite have that technology yet, but I think it's great. So I really encourage people to go on the booster site and be able to do that. And it will just really increase the experience for everybody that can tune into some of the games on local live. And also it's a fundraiser for the Booster Development Fund. So I just hope, again, it's more intuition, more ways of reimagining what we're dealing with here and allowing people to feel such a community as well. So that is it.
I just want to mention, because we actually don't have any more meetings before this date, I'm the board liaison to the Morris Greeley Scholarship Fund. And the virtual gala will be March 19th. And I know there will be more information going out to the community and I will probably speak about it again at the meeting closer to that. But obviously, anybody is welcome to virtually attend the virtual gala. And it should be great. So I just wanted to mention that.
And they're recognizing and honoring our custodians.
They are.
The show is so appropriate. Now custodians are.
Absolutely.
You know, stars of the show here.
Yes.
All the faculty and everyone, really.
A big reason we are able to be open. So it should be a lovely event.
Anything else? Anything on policy? Not audience season yet. Okay. That's it, facilities? No, you already reported on facilities.
Right.
Oh, no.
No, it's a meeting.
Okay. All right then. So we are now at public comment period. We welcome public comments and we ask that you limit your public comments to three minutes. So anyone with a comment, please feel free to come up to the microphone. And please identify yourself, even if we know you.
Of course. My name is Kelly Mofield. I'm the president of the Chappaqua PTA this year. And I wanted to remind you that the Chappaqua PTA STEM Fest is coming up and our registration opened today. And I know at your last meeting, you talked about some of you perhaps reaching out to be judges and help with that. And I wanted to remind you again, if you're available, we're still looking for people. And so, and we appreciate all your support in that area as well. And I also wanted to thank you for commenting on the hard work that the new diversity committee is doing with the PTA. They've been hard at work this month especially for Black History Month to come up with new creative ways to celebrate in the PTA and share that celebration with parents so that they could bring the celebration home. And I think it's, so far, we've had a lot of good reports about it. And so I appreciate you commenting on that at the beginning. And we're looking forward to Lunar New Year and other events coming up that the diversity committee is hard at work for. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. And that includes our public comment period. We can move on to approvals and ratification. So may I ask for a motion to approve items 3.1 and 3.2, which is actually to accept the minutes of the January 27th, 2021 board meeting and the minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 special board meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Oh.
A second.
Any discussion or comments, corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Superintendent's recommendations?
Recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
I will second. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Recommend 4.2 now as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation on 4.2.
A second.
Comments?
I just briefly wanted to say, I know we have one item on that, the resignation for versus retirement of Paulette McCarron. And I know that all the retirees are celebrated in June, but I just, I hope that you'll indulge me to say a personal note of appreciation for her, I think, more than 25 years here. All three of my children went through growing growth. The oldest is 26 and Mrs. McCarron was there on her first day of school. And we have a lot of changes in our buildings, of faculty and administration as is normal in a school district. She has been the face of growing growth for many, many years and cared for a lot of skinned knees and kids crying about lost bus passes and a lot of other things and always with a warm embrace and a big smile. And I just really wanted to say a big thank you to her and wish her the best out of her time.
That's very nice. Thank you for those comments, Jane. And we all echo those. I echo them. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll get to recommended actions. This is our consent agenda, which the board uses to make more effective use of our time to cover relatively routine matters in a single motion. May I ask at this time if anyone would like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Under the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? And I'll go over a little bit of the few things I'd like to say. But does anyone have any comments on any of the items?
We have.
So just for transparency, I would like to talk a little bit about what we're approving. So we have the grants that Adam talked about, the ExxonMobil grants and the Chappaqua School Foundation grants. We're very, very grateful for that. We also have an agreement for the use of the electronic voting machines and for the delivery and retrieval of those, which is for the May election. And we don't have any guidance as to the school elections yet. We don't know anything quite yet about petitions or how the vote will take place this year. So we will wait on that and our district board will let us know. So we can let the community know about that. Also, we have the RFP for equity inclusion anti-racism work that Christine talked about. I would like to mention that we have an agreement with our CCT. The contract expired and we have an agreement that's essentially rolling over the terms of this current agreement, which is expiring this year. And that is basically a recognition of two things. One is the financial constraints that we find ourselves in during these COVID times. And also recognition of all of the outstanding work that our CCT members have done, faculty have done for the district. So the rolling over of their contract was sort of a balance between those two. And we are very grateful to them for all that they've done for us and for our students and families and for their partnership with the district. And let's see what else we have. We have some educational services contracts and the engineering services for the Zarner subdivision that Christine talked about. And an agreement for the Booster Ice Arena, which is very important. So that would be what's in the consent agenda. Any other thoughts or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now, anything else on facilities? No? Okay. Financials? May I have a motion to acknowledge, this would be items 7.1 through 7.3. We have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's report, the revenue status report, and the appropriation status report, all for January 2021.
I move that we acknowledge receipt of those reports.
I, okay, Jane, second. Any questions or comments on the financials? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, at 7:30 PM. We'll have our superintendent's budget proposal. And that will take place here at the Morris Greeley High School Auditorium. Following that, it will be another regular meeting on March 17th, where we will have a presentation, a budget presentation on curriculum and technology, actually three budget presentations, one on curriculum and technology, one on special ed, and one on athletics. And that will be here at the high school auditorium. Okay, we are ready to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn at 9:27.
May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned at 9:27.